It's 6:30. Calling to order the Nahat Board of Selectment meeting for May 6, 2021. We are live. I gotta get to my agenda. I think first order business is Deb Murphy and John Kulan are gonna give us an update on the coronavirus statistics and testing and vaccines, et cetera.
Okay. So we have right now in Nahat, three active COVID cases. In the last two weeks, the data that came out tonight from the state, we've had six cases. We've had 418 Nahat residents tested. Just to compare that to Swamsgate and Marblehead, Swamsgate has had 28 new cases in that time. Frame and Marblehead has had 22. I did collect some interesting data tonight on the vaccines, though.
Hold on a second. Hold on a second.
Okay.
All right, go ahead.
So I was able to find our town information, and it was done in age groups. So I can tell you, I'll go down the list and let you know what percent of our age groups have been vaccinated as of today. So 0 to 19, you wouldn't expect a high number because most of the, you have to really be 18 for Moderna and 16 for Pfizer. So only 6%. 20 to 20...
Deb, is that one dose or fully?
No, these are the fully vaccinated. I didn't, I could have separated it by one and two, but I thought fully would be...
Yeah, no.
Better for us to hear, right?
Yeah, thank you.
Fully vaccinated. At 20 to 29-year-olds, we have 43% vaccinated. 30 to 49, 35% vaccinated. 50 to 64, 74% vaccinated. 65 to 74, 94% vaccinated.
Yeah.
And 75 plus, 83% vaccinated. I think those numbers are great. It's wonderful, to tell you the truth. So, you know, our numbers have been down. The highest age group right now for positive cases is 20 to 39 years old, followed by 40 to 59. The average age of the person in the hospital with COVID now is 60, but the average age of deaths now is 70. And for the longest time, that was 80 and above. But now, you know, most of that people, as you can see in that age group, have been vaccinated. So the average age of the death has come down to 70.
Was that the age range for the three cases we now have?
So the three cases we now have, yeah, yeah, they're trending in a little bit younger than... Which doesn't surprise us because, just because of the vaccine situation. We do have a couple of contacts in Nahat from the Swamsgate Middle School. Not tested positive, but just home on quarantine because they were considered close contacts in the school.
So Deb, do you have a total percentage?
For the whole town?
Yeah, I guess if you, you'd have to add all that stuff up.
No, I didn't, I actually didn't calculate that. I suppose I could do that if I added up all these numbers and divided it. I could do that if you'd like me to.
That's okay, I won't, I won't pop quiz you like that. But either way, it sounds, it sounds remarkable, tremendous job.
So next week, though, just to let people know, we're waiting, so the Boards of Health and, you know, we're waiting to hear that we can go ahead and vaccinate the 12-year-olds, 12-plus. They're saying that that would be with the Pfizer vaccine. And so when that happens, we will move forward with that age group. And then our numbers in that low category, of course, will go up. John, uh... What?
Sorry, sorry, I keep throwing questions at you. Where would, if that does, if that age group does become eligible, would they be going to Salem?
So John, do you want to speak about Salem State University?
Sure.
Because I do think, Tony, this is, this would be the next step for this age.
All right.
So two days ago, Tuesday morning, Deb and I joined about 25 of our colleagues from about a dozen surrounding public health departments. We are, we have a cooperative endeavor at Salem State University O'Keefe Center. Equipment being dropped off today and being set up tomorrow and Monday for a first clinic on this coming Tuesday. Communication and to the media is going out today and tomorrow, the initial push. And we, like any other clinic, we are dependent upon receiving vaccine. Now, we have enough to start, and we are looking to put it on Tuesdays and Thursdays. We're going to have to see what the turnout is. The turnout at the LinTech site has been decreasing. And Deb has been involved in some targeted vaccinating activities. And it looks like that's where we're going to need to go. However, we need to continue to offer clinics that are easy for people to get to at times and locations. So as we get information, it will be posted on the town website at the COVID-19 information section of the town website. So just go to the town website and click on COVID-19, and you'll get that information as well as whatever has been posted in the past. Did I miss anything, Deb?
No, I think, you know, I think we should still say LinTech is still operational, six days a week, four evenings a week at this point. But there, we are looking to, they are looking to reorganize a little bit as they're, you know, seeing, like John mentioned, the numbers decreasing and trying to utilize all the staff that they have at those clinics. But I do continue to work with the Lin Board of Health, and we are like a mobile unit now. So we have been going to those areas where the most, pretty much the most vulnerable people, the people that are having a hard time get to the clinics. We actually went to St. Mary's High School one day last week, and we did vaccinate all those that were 16 and older. So that was the first time that we've, you know, gone to the, to the younger age group, so.
I'd say we are doing so well in town, I say "we." Town citizens are showing up wherever there's vaccine and stepping up, rolling up their sleeves, receiving the vaccine, getting us closer toward herd immunity so effectively that my colleagues on the North Shore have been making jokes like, "Boy, we should all be like Nahat." Wouldn't it be great if we could all be like Nahat? If everybody's citizens would just get the vaccine and do what we've been telling them to do and asking them to do and pleading with them to do for a year now? Or, you know, with the masks and now, now the vaccine. I have colleagues that look at me and they say, "So is Nahat at 100% yet?" I say, "Well, no, but we're getting there, ahead of everybody else." So collectively, we have a lot to be proud of in town that people are showing up and doing the right thing.
There's a question in the chat, John. What are the current COVID-19 rules about inside and outside groups in private homes or gatherings?
Well, the, on Monday, we move to Phase 4, Step 2. On Monday, we move to 100 inside, 150 outside, if the spaces can already handle that number of people, and maintaining six feet of distance, except of course, in the case of members of the same household. So people who have been applying for Board of Health approval for their COVID-19 compliance plans, I've been advising, hold off until Monday and adjust at that time. And I've been directing people to the state websites so they can follow the progress. Our dates for changes are May 10, May 29, and August 1. Those are current dates, and there's even a possibility things might happen sooner than those dates. But I've just been telling people, stay tuned. Okay?
Yes, thank you. That's all great news, Deb and John, so thanks for sharing that. It's encouraging to see that Nahaters are getting vaccinated and doing the right thing, so great progress. Anything else on COVID before we move on?
Josh, I just might add that we have our second clinic at Nahat Town Hall. Our second dose for the residents that came will be June 1, and we're going to have it from 10 to 11. But I think they all should have had that appointment made when they left.
It's great, and it was great that we were able to offer that at clinic, so.
I'll make two somewhat COVID-related comments. You know, one for town meeting. Obviously, we're expecting a lot more than 150 people. Just for those, you know, who, I think I've said it a couple of times, but for anybody that doesn't know, as a governing legislative body, we are exempt from those gathering limits. However, we're doing everything we can to set up the town meeting space to be as safe as possible so that people can safely participate in the meeting and make their votes on any of the articles. It will be a, quite a large tent with three sides open, so it'll be nice fresh air blowing through. Seats will be in pairs, so members of the same household are sitting with each other. Those pairs will be spaced. The, you know, line for when you're, we will have ushers or staff working the meeting so that when people are walking through the registration and then getting to their seats, we're doing it in a, in an orderly fashion, and same thing on the, when people are exiting, in an orderly fashion. We'll talk a lot about that, you know, when the meeting opens. But I just wanted to take the opportunity here to provide some comfort to those that are listening that it will be a COVID-safe environment. It will be required to wear a mask at all times. We, what we may do, we're still kind of going back and forth on this one, is what we may do is we might allow folks to remove their mask when they are speaking at a microphone. But other than that, we should have a safe, a safe compliant event of town meeting. And then the other thing I just wanted to mention is that we've been monitoring these outside number, group gatherings events guidelines very closely for is Memorial Day. We've gotten a lot of questions from residents about what Nahat's plan is for Memorial Day celebrations. We will be hosting the cemetery portion of our typical Memorial Day celebrations this year. So we will have an event at the memorial, at the cemetery. Outdoor gathering with, you know, the Swamsgate Band will be there. We'll go through reading of the names and the Gettysburg Address. By that time, I think we'll be at 2:50, is that right, John?
May 29, we expect to go 2:50.
So we should be, we should be fine with having folks outside. We'll keep people spaced, but I wanted to let folks know that Memorial Day, 11:00 a.m. at the cemetery, we will have an outdoor event open to the public. That's all I wanted to add to the COVID part.
All right, thanks for that, Tony. I know a lot of people, me included, are disappointed we won't have a parade, but the cemetery, cemetery event is kind of the crown jewel of the whole day, so I'm glad we'll be able to at least have that. So if there's nothing else, the next topic, our opening comments. 2021 parking stickers are now available at nahat.org. You do have to pay all your outstanding bills and complete the census form prior to purchase of the parking stickers. The compost area is open for business for the season, excuse me, on Wednesdays and Saturdays from 9 to 3. A resident sticker is required. Leaves and other yard waste must be in biodegradable bags or no bags. No plastic bags will be accepted. Visit nahat.org for acceptable materials and accepted material list is, I think, available on the website as well. Recycling for metal and white goods, TVs, computers at the Department of Public Works parking lot on the last Saturday of each month from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon until October 30. There may be fees depending on what you're dropping off, so visit nahat.org for more information. If there is a fee, no cash can be accepted, it's checks only, please. Next item on the agenda is, or Mark, Mark and Jean, do you have any opening comments to add?
Oh, I have none.
Well, I think we should probably announce that we are meeting on Tuesday, next Tuesday, at 10 o'clock in front of the Town Hall. The purpose of that meeting is to accept a gift of $3 million to support the Emanata May process. So that will be an exciting day for Nahat.
Absolutely. Yeah, so that'll be sort of a formal presentation of the $3 million. Really exciting moment for Nahat. Can't thank the donors enough. I think this, you know, well, obviously goes a long way to helping the town, so looking forward to that event. So 10 o'clock Tuesday morning, outside on the lawn in front of Town Hall. New business. We're gonna vote, we're gonna have a joint vote between the Board of Selectmen and the School Committee to fill a vacancy on the School Committee. That's per Section 3-13 of the Town Charter. We have some School Committee Meeting members on the call, I think. And we have at least one resume, maybe, I think it's only one resume. Tony, do you want to explain the process when we have a vacant position on an elected board or committee?
Yes, I am, I'm trying to click on the names or screens of the School Committee members and asking them to...
I'll read the, if you want, I'll read the, I'll read how it works while you do that. So I want to make a position on an elected, elected board or elected committee. Our bylaw stipulates that a vote, a joint vote of the remaining members of that board with the Board of Selectmen can vote to appoint someone to fill the seat until, until the next vote, I believe. It says "as the appointed."
Right, it goes, so when you get appointed by the joint vote, you are filling that seat until the next annual election? And at that point, the remaining years of that seat is up for election.
Right, so that would be until April of 2022. So I don't know if Regina Lane or any other School Committee member wants to make a motion to nominate candidate?
Yeah, right, so I'm sorry, just further that, so what the process here is, you will nominate. I think there's only, the School Committee put a posting out asking for anybody that was interested in being appointed. They got, they received one letter of interest. And so the process here is that they will nominate the candidate, they'll vote to nominate the candidate. And as you guys are familiar with, being online here, you got to do a roll call vote for that. And then there'll be the joint vote to appoint. So again, I'm, if you are, if you are a School Committee member, please unmute yourself and... Madam Chair, take it from there.
Hi, I'm Regina Lane, I'm the Chair of the School Committee. So I would like to nominate, if I, am I able to in this forum nominate?
Yes.
That's okay, I'd like to nominate Beth Anderson to the open School Committee position, which is, which would be in place until April of 2022.
I'd second that motion.
All in favor of the vote, by a show of hands?
I think we have to do a roll call vote.
Okay, roll call vote, sorry. Michelle Dan?
Aye.
Patty Karas?
Aye.
Lauren Sherlock?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Gina, is it okay if I say a quick statement? I'd just like to just recognize that we are so lucky, not only to have a volunteer for this position, but to have it be someone who brings so much to the table. From what I understand, Beth has years of experience in education, mostly at, you know, a higher grade level, but her experience will be invaluable to our town and our community. And I'm really grateful to her for her leaping into service less than a year after moving to Nahat. So Beth, thank you so much.
Very impressive resume.
Absolutely, she's done a lot in education and a lot for the world. She's just a great person, and we're very lucky.
I'm asking Beth to unmute if you would, if Beth, if you want to take a moment to say a few words.
Sure, and that's humbling, and it's an incredible opportunity for me, too. I've thought about being on School Committee off and on for a long time, and it was a colleague of mine involved in Teach for America. I'm an alum of that group, although way, way back. And she noted that there was, there might be some, you know, some room in Nahat. And I felt instantly, you know, lucky to have the opportunity. My family and I, my wife and I moved, we spent our first night in Nahat at 26 Sunset Road on September 8. And we have three kids. One is at Johnson School right now in first grade, and his little brother will join him next year. We got to meet Michelle through soccer, and we have a 15-year-old at Essex Tech, ninth grade. So we are full throttle, high impact in it with the public schools, and we're very excited. And I've devoted my whole career to public school education. I am a school superintendent for a public charter outfit that spans across Massachusetts. My background is working with really marginalized young people. And I started, kind of cut my teeth, working with gang-involved youth in South Central LA in the early 90s and, you know, have turned that into a lot of investment and reform efforts in public education so that our vehicles really serve young people, so they don't just graduate, but actually get set up for life to be able to stand on their own two feet and have an opportunity for an equitable future. And so we do that across Massachusetts with kids, with schools that serve really vulnerable young people, still formerly gang-involved kids, but also newcomers to the country. And just, you know, kids that have been marginalized and need a break so that they can get ahead. And so that's what we do, and to some, and it's been really great. But this is another, you know, serving on a School Committee is a different adventure, and I think I have something to bring, but a lot to learn from superintendent. Our sitting superintendent is great, it's been wonderful getting to know Mr. Andrews at the Johnson School. And so I want to learn and contribute, and I, just every night we spend in Nahat feels magical and feels like a gift to be in this just really special, special town. And so I want to give back, and I appreciate you giving me a chance, potentially.
Thank you, Beth. We're so excited to have you, and clearly you have a lot of interest, and we're gonna have a lot to gain with you as a member of our team.
Yes, thank you very much, Beth, for volunteering. For those that can't see Beth's resume, it's very impressive. She's currently the Chief Executive Officer for the Phoenix Charter Academy Network, has been in that role for nine years, so a lot of experience extending even further back. So it's Nahat that's receiving the gift of your, of your volunteerism, so thank you very much, Beth.
Thanks, Josh.
Okay, so we, the Board of Selectmen needs to vote on this also.
Typically... Do we, the nomination, oh.
I think, I think the School Committee nominating the candidate is enough. And then typically, we let the School Committee do their votes first.
Okay. Okay, so that was the nomination, right? So now we need a motion to appoint?
Yes.
Right, so that School Committee can go first on that appointment motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Beth Anderson to the open position on the School Committee.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call vote, Michelle Dan?
Aye.
Patty Karas?
Aye.
Lauren Sherlock?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to appoint Beth Anderson to the Nahat School Committee.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, roll call vote?
Jean-Cécie, aye.
Josh Andrew, aye. Congratulations, Beth, and thank you again very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Beth.
Congratulations, Beth, good to have you on the team.
Thanks, everybody, looking forward to the first meeting. Is someone, is someone gonna let me know when that is?
Beth, I'll be in touch with you about how to get sworn in, and we'll have our next meeting next Tuesday.
Appreciate you, thank you.
Thanks. Next topic is for the Board of Selectmen to approve some meeting minutes? I have a motion?
Okay, yeah, we can do that. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes from April 15, 2021.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, roll call vote?
Jean-Cécie, aye.
Mark Cullen, aye.
Josh Andrew, aye. We have another set of minutes to approve. Do we have a motion?
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes from April 29, 2021.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing and hearing, seeing and hearing none, roll call vote?
Jean-Cécie, aye.
Mark Cullen, aye.
Josh Andrew, aye. The next topic is approve lobster trap storage lease. We have a motion there.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the following 2021 lobster trap storage leases as presented and further that the release of, re-lease of said leases are subject to the payment of all outstanding fees, fines, and payments to the town of Nahat.
Okay, and that's for Anthony Alessius lease. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, roll call vote?
Jean-Cécie, aye.
Mark Cullen, aye.
Josh Andrew, aye. Item four on the agenda is ongoing business, town meeting preparations and update. We have some announcements to make. Tony?
Yes, so I also want to recognize the town moderator has joined us. I'm going to ask him to unmute.
It has been done.
Hello, Mr. Moderator.
So, you know, I just want, I put this on the calendar. We have some, we had some procedural questions regarding town meeting that I thought this was a good time to bring some of those up. You and I and Town Council met the other day to discuss some of those questions. We, we did go through a few of them last night in the informational session regarding eminent domain. However, you know, these procedural questions aren't specific to any article. So they are things that we could, you know, discuss at this time. I also wanted to use this opportunity to remind folks about what to expect at town meeting regarding parking and mask wearing. I talked a little bit about that at the beginning of our meeting during the COVID segment. But we will have quite a large tent on the field behind the fire station. We will not be at the town hall. Folks can park on the park side of Flash Road. You'll be able to drive through the parking lot of the Fire Department and DPW to drop off. And there'll be handicap parking available there. And then you'll continue to drive through behind the DPW and up to the school where there'll be parking available in the school and along Castle Road. Traffic will be in one-way direction from Castle Road towards Mitchell's Corner. You could drive down Fox Hill Road and take, either go straight through or take a left. But when you get to Mitchell's Corner, you're going to be directed around. Again, this because we're going to have a lot of cars and parking. We are working on, we will make an announcement. We're trying to figure out, trying to find someone to, we're working with the Council on Aging on using the Council on Aging bus for those who might need transportation down to the meeting. When you get there, again, you'll, you'll be required to wear a mask. Registered voters will be given a, an electronic voting device for all the votes that have been taken. We, I think a lot of people are familiar with those devices because we did use those in the town hall the first time. And then last year was the second time using them, but it, but it's a great device. It speeds up the voting. It's essentially a secret ballot mechanism that allows you to quickly vote yes or no when, when a question is asked. And we will have people there, you know, walking us through some example questions before the meeting starts.
Tony, can I ask Dave a question? Dave, you got auction with those, with those mailboxes we used to use? Tony joking.
Put them on eBay.
Like the file.
By the way, I think one important thing to note is that town meeting will start at 12 o'clock. We've got a lot to do, so we're going to get an early start. We usually start at 12:30, but this year we will start at 12 o'clock on Saturday, the 15th. So be there or be square.
I am just looking for, trying to pull up the document. Hold on one sec. Okay, so Mr. Moderator, I'm gonna ask you some of these procedural questions. As I said, we did discuss them last night. I did defer to you, I promise, on all these questions and said they should be.
I watched you last night.
He kept an eye on me?
Finger of fate pointing in my direction, for sure.
Hopefully, hopefully I did a good job. Okay, so, let's see. Could you please clarify whether Article 2, Section 9 and 15 of the Town Charter are currently valid?
Section 15 is not valid and we really should move to get that out of our bylaw. We've had difficulty with it in the past. But as you know, back in 2008, we voted to change Robert's Rules of Order, which are kind of general. And we adopted, adopted as the governing rules for our town meeting, Town Meeting Time, which is published by the Massachusetts Moderators Association. And as that book points out, schemes such as are set up in Article 15 are not valid. So Article 15 was originally set up at a time when things were a bit more simple. But these days, you distinguish between town meeting vote and a ballot vote. And the philosophy of the state is that town meeting votes have to take place at town meeting. And ballot votes have many other requirements to be set up so that they're fairly run. In fact, if you look at the Town Meeting Time on page 153, it mentions that a couple of Massachusetts towns had adopted bylaws requiring that the meeting adjourned to a subsequent date to vote by secret ballot at the polls on any motion or to authorize certain borrowing. The Secretary of State's Election Division has ruled that such an adjourned session must be considered an election requiring compliance with election laws for registration of voters and absentee ballots. Because the town meeting votes must be taken at a town meeting and not an election, such a procedure must be authorized by special statute, and we have no such statute. We have, we've received also advice of Town Council. And the effect is that this is not, and I think they actually, people have checked with the state and there's been no suggestion that there's any way that that approach is valid. So Section 15 is invalid. And Section 9, except to the extent that it refers to Section 15, is quite valid and is a typical way of setting up for town meetings. So Section 9 is valid except for the citation to Article 15. And Section 15 is invalid. That was probably too long, sorry.
No, it's great. You also mentioned Town Council, which I'll, I'll introduce the folks on the call here. Most people here probably are familiar with Jeff Blake. He's been with us for, for quite a few town meetings now. But on Saturday of town meeting, we'll also have Mark Rich, who's here. Mark, would you like to introduce yourself? Say hello?
Yes, thank you, Tony. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having me. Again, my name is Mark Rich with KP Law. Jeff and I are partners at the firm and I'm very happy to join you on this. Just for some background, I've been doing municipal law now for a little over 30 years. So hence the, the white hair. But happy to join you. I, I, I can't tell you how many town meetings I've done. So I do consider myself pretty proficient in, in town meeting issues. And we did spend a long and very productive couple of hours yesterday going over the warrants, the motions, the issues that we're discussing right now. I think the moderator is doing a great job presenting these issues. And I think you've, you've got a great team of folks helping you. And I'm just looking forward to assisting to the extent that I can. I look forward to meeting you all on Saturday, the 15th.
Excellent, thank you. Another question. Could you please clarify how a vote to take the, take a warrant article out of the current order would be treated?
Yes, certainly I'd do that. So Town Meeting Time points out that the moderator has a lot of discretion in dealing with that kind of emotion. The, the way it rephrases it is that in the absence of a bylaw to the contrary, the moderator can set and change the, the order of the articles taken up. But here in Nahat, we do have a bylaw that specifically says that that the order of the articles will be followed in the absence of a vote to the contrary. And so I don't have the ability to change the order of articles on my own. But there will be a vote, or there could be a vote at town meeting. And that's, that's kind of a good thing to have because you don't know why people want to change timing of things. And sometimes it's a bit tactical and sometimes it depends on what the, what the mode of the meeting is at the time. So if a motion is to be made, it has to be made at a time when no other motion is pending or no other business is pending. And it would be a majority motion to make a change. So we'll see what happens at town meeting. But we can't make a change at this point. The, the warrant has been submitted and can't be changed at this time. So only through a motion at town meeting can it be changed.
Dave, could, could that motion be made early in the, in the meeting in order to give people an idea of when they would necessarily have to be there or would want to be there?
Well, the motion can be made at any time, as long as there's no other, no other business pending. On the other hand, I think it's risky to, if you, if you really want to get a vote on something, to count on something being taken up at a particular time. You know, I can remember when I was on the Finance Committee, you watch town meeting and it seems to be going this way and then it goes that way and then it goes up and then it goes down. And you don't know what's going to happen from time standpoint. So I think people should plan on being there rather than being square. And that way they get to vote on the articles as they come up, whatever the order.
Yep. And did you mention, the second part of that question was the threshold of that vote?
Yeah, I, it's just a majority vote.
Okay.
But, well, in the normal case, it's a majority vote. But if it looks like something is being done for tactical reasons or something, I do have the discretion to make it a two-thirds vote. And I haven't made any preconceived decisions on that at this point. We'll just have to see what happens in town meeting, what seems to be the issue at the time.
Mr. Moderator, just a clarifying question. So the motion could be to change the sequence of the votes, but not to set a particular time of day to hear that vote?
Yes, under our by, under our bylaws, a motion to adjourn to a time certain is not one of the options for, for the procedure.
Thanks.
So, so someone could motion to take an article up next? Or they could say, I want to move Article 36 up to, to be heard after Article 10?
Those, those motions could be made, yes. Those are kind of motions that could be made.
Okay. The next question was about a motion for reconsideration. How does that work?
Well, under our bylaw, a motion for reconsideration has to be made within 15 minutes of the vote that's taken. And the reason for that is, in the past, people have used motion for reconsideration to really change the playing, playing field. So if everybody votes and they're all there to vote on this article and then they storm out of the place and then a half an hour later, somebody moves to reconsider, then you have an entirely different voting group. And the people who won may be home having a cold beer, but they may lose in the end. So it's got to be done within 15 minutes. And it's, I think it's a majority vote. And it can't be done more than once. Oh, I just lost.
We still got you. You still here?
Well, I can't see me, but I'm not that interested anyway. But anyway, I, I think it has to be done within 15 minutes. The majority vote can't be done more than twice. And it has to be done such that the reconsideration is done in the same meeting that the original vote took place.
Mr. Moderator, I want to clarify a question. So the, the vote to reconsider is a majority vote. But when you get back to the main question again, if it's a two-thirds vote, would it be a two-thirds vote again?
Absolutely, yeah. The reconsideration is not the same, not necessarily the same.
And it's simply the motion to reconsider has to happen within 15 minutes? Not that you actually get through the vote?
Absolutely. People have to be put on notice that somebody is going to have it reconsidered so they can stick around and vote again to affect the result.
So after that 15 minutes has lapsed, a vote to reconsider a previous vote is no longer valid?
That's correct. And that's been enforced in the past. And it's an important part of the rule. Because again, you can, if you wait until everybody's dispersed, then the people who legitimately believe that they've won on a motion might be gone and might lose it. From procedural rule rather than substantive rule.
So there was, there was a follow-up question that we talked about, about who can make a motion to reconsider? And base, the basis of that was an idea of only if you voted in favor or only if you voted opposed, are you eligible to make a motion to reconsider? Can you explain that?
Yes, there have been rules in other towns that say that you can only vote to reconsider if you voted on one side or the other. And the problem with that is, of course, that in most votes, up until these, even with these machines, the moderator can't tell whether the person who is moving to reconsider voted one way or the other. And so there's, if you look in Town Meeting Time, they talk about kind of contests of wills where the moderator either doesn't believe or does believe the person voted the way he had to vote. But luckily in Nahat, we don't have such a bylaw. So it's not necessary for you to have voted on the winning side or on the losing side. It's, anyone can make a motion to reconsider. They're not favored and I don't think they're a good idea. But sometimes people can bring them up and the rule provides for it. So we'll see how, how it goes at town meeting.
And I, how many motions to reconsider are allowed?
Can't be made more than, let me see. I think it can't be done more than once, but I want to double check it before I make that.
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Moderator, while we're looking at Section 14 of the, the town's bylaws, which says no vote may be reconsidered unless notice that said motion will be made is given within 15 minutes after such vote is declared, which we already discussed. And a motion to reconsider, and, and a motion to reconsider, it is made. it is made and voted on at the same meeting before any adjournment thereof. Such a motion, if defeated, shall not be renewed.
That's right. That's what I thought. Thank you for having that. I, I found it just about the time you finished reading it.
You're welcome, sir.
Um, couple of follow-up questions that, uh, you know, are a, a little repetitive, but I want to ask them just because I think there's still some confusion. So, um, if, uh, if someone moves to reconsider, um, the actual vote to reconsider has to happen within fifteen minutes?
No.
No. There has to be a notice. You may end up having a, uh, such a motion while you're discussing another matter. And it's just required that the, the meeting be put on notice that someone is moving for reconsideration. That has to happen within the fifteen minutes. Then when the reconsideration takes place, if indeed the motion carries, that we will, uh, we will handle. I have discretion to set that up so that it won't interfere with other aspects of the meeting.
Uh, so it could, so if someone motioned to reconsider within fifteen minutes of the results of the previous vote, that, that actual vote of reconsideration, um, would occur relatively soon from that notice? Or it could occur much later in the meeting?
Uh, I would tend to, to have it go soon, but you don't want to disrupt the other things that are going on. You don't want to have that be a, a distraction from the business of the town. So at the time that, if, if that occurs, then, uh, I will probably consult with the FinCom and the Selectmen and figure out, uh, when would be a good time to take a reconsideration vote if that has to take place.
All right. Um, so if you're at the meeting and a reconsideration vote passes, uh, or a motion to reconsider passes, don't leave until the reconsideration vote is actually taking place. When does the clock start on that fifteen minutes to reconsider? When the, uh, vote, uh, when the results of the original vote are on the screen? Or, uh, when you announce?
When they're announced.
When they're announced.
When they're announced. Well, when, when the meeting becomes aware of them, so usually, uh, we have to start the clock at that point.
Um, we did have a, uh, an ADA-related request, um, a Disabilities Act request, uh, that, um, seniors and those with disabilities who would not be able to sit in a field, uh, in a chair for a long time, um, with uncertain weather, if a time certain, um, is an option, uh, for when an article would be taken up? Or if it's not, you know, how could we make a reasonable accommodation for that?
Well, I think we have to kind of roll with the punches, and we'll have to see what happens at the meeting. Most of the time, uh, old codgers like myself, uh, spend a lot of time in town meetings, and, uh, most people can, uh, can do that. Uh, if, uh, there's some issue in particular instances that we can take consideration of that. But I don't assume that, uh, people, just because they're advanced in age, can't participate in town meeting. Um, on the other hand, as I pointed out before, we really can't set it for a particular time. And if you try to set it, uh, with regard to, uh, particular place in the, uh, in the order that's set up by the warrant, you don't know exactly when that's going to occur. There can be other things happening. So for example, if you think you're going to do something, uh, at a, after a particular, uh, article, and in the meantime, somebody does something and then moves to reconsider, that may delay things. Or if you're thinking that it will go at a certain time, and somebody makes a motion to take it out of order ahead of time, and if you're not there, you won't, uh, you won't have a chance to vote on it. So the best approach is to go with the understanding that you're going to be at town meeting, and that you're going to do what's got to be done at town meeting. That's part of our, uh, our duties as a citizen of the town.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. Um, Board of Selectmen, do you have any other questions regarding procedure?
No, I'm good.
I do not. No, thank you, Dave.
My pleasure. I lost, I can't see anybody anymore, but, uh, I'll get back into it somehow or other. Thank you, fellas.
Um, just a reminder, uh, that we will be on Thursday, a week from tonight. We have a joint meeting with the moderator, uh, the finance committee, the board of selectmen. I think the planning board will be there as well, since there's a, um, the marijuana bylaw is, uh, they're, they will be reporting, they will be providing their report and recommendations at town meeting. Uh, so we'll be meeting, um, Thursday night. We do this every year, the Thursday before town meeting. It is a working meeting amongst the committees. It is not a, um, citizens forum, uh, or debating-type meeting. It's just simply us going through every article of the warrant with the moderator and, um, getting ready for town meeting, declaring which articles require a, um, simple majority, or two-thirds, or four-fifths, pretty standard. But so that's a reminder, we will be doing that, um, in a week. Uh, all right. That's all for that portion of the meeting, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Um, the next topic is, um, preserving East Point. For those that don't know, um, we had a, uh, an information session last night, um, on the articles related to eminent domain, Articles twenty-one V and twenty-two. Uh, we took, um, an hour's worth of questions live. Um, there were some left over, and, um, when we reached our, um, meeting close time. And, um, so we'll take those. Um, and we'll also, uh, we can also take fresh questions. I think that, uh, uh, any fresh questions, we should return to the normal procedure of stating your name and address, ask your question. Um, I did want to take a moment to clarify, there was a question about, um, could Northeastern, if we, if eminent domain were executed over, um, the area that we showed on the map, uh, could they, could Northeastern build elsewhere on the property? And, and, and I answered yes, uh, and that is, you know, fundamentally correct. But, um, it's, there is some debate about whether, um, the Dover Amendment would allow, uh, building in a, in an area zone as a natural resource area. So I just wanted to, um, add that condition, um, and that much of the rest of the property is either in a floodplain or wetlands buffer zone. So it's, it's possible that Northeastern could build, but there, uh, it would not be sort of a carte blanche situation. There would be some, they would have to abide by the rules that the rest of us abide by. So, um, I just wanted to add that clarification, um, from, to, uh, to my answer from last night. Um, I know, Tony, you had sent out some, uh, questions that were left over, um, from last night. Um, we should probably start with those.
Yeah, what I'll do is I'll, I'll read those questions. Um, Jim Masterman, Jeff Blake, Mark Rich are all here, so, and they're all unmuted. Um, so I'll just ask the questions, and you guys can answer them like we did last night. And then we'll get to, um, then we can, like, as you said, we can get back to the citizens forum piece of it, and any new questions can be asked to you guys. Sound good?
Yep.
Yes.
Good.
Okay. Um, all right, here we go. If we do not support town meeting articles and NU builds as planned, is there anything stopping them from later proposing to build another fifty-five thousand square foot building? A parking garage? Ask the town to make infrastructure improvements, improve traffic access to their property, or whatever else?
Not sure who you're, uh, who's supposed to answer that, but, uh, I guess my answer would be, I guess they can propose anything. Um, there are, of course, the restrictions that I just mentioned, the, the floodplains, the, the wetlands, buffer zone, and those kind of considerations, but I suppose they could propose anything.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, I think, uh, obviously, if, if the town doesn't take any action on the fifteenth or sixteenth, if we happen to go that far, and, uh, um, the property remains as it is today, Northeastern will be obviously subject to any restrictions that are currently in place. And, uh, you know, application of the Dover Amendment would be determined based upon what is proposed. But, uh, you know, essentially, that would be a status quo situation.
What is the damage from a single building with a commitment to conservation set aside for the rest of the land?
It didn't sound like a complete sentence. Could you, could you say that again?
I think it's more so asking, um, I think what it's getting at is, is the board's opinion on Northeastern's proposal of building, you know, having them, uh, build their single building and provide a conservation, um, restriction on the rest of the land. What, what is the, 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 the question is, exact quote, what is the damage from a single building with a commitment to conservation set aside for the rest of the land?
Well, I think that's, um, referring to, um, Northeastern said that they, after they finish, um, building their planned, i- if, if they were able to go forward, after they finish building their fifty thousand, thousand square feet, put in the parking lots, put in the five acres of geothermal wells and lights and all that, and then we'll put a conservation restriction on the part of the land that we are proposing to put a conservation restriction on, not all the land, but those, those same twelve acres. What would be the damage? You know? I'm trying to figure out how to say this, uh, without, uh, it will provide a sincere answer. But, I mean, the horse would be out of the barn, you know? It's, it's essentially, if we completely develop the property as we, as we want to, um, and then when we're all done, put a conservation restriction on what's left, um, I don't see value in that, honestly. But, um, I don't know if Gene or Mark, you have anything to add to that?
I would, I would, go ahead, Gene.
If I could, I think it was in the final impact report. In, in there, they said that after completion of this project, that they would put a conservation restriction east of the Murphy bunker, or the, the, or the, uh, geothermal field. And there's no way to build out there anyhow. So what they're saying is, we'll give you a conservation restriction out there, but we'll use the rest of the property, probably some twelve acres, to build on at any time we want.
Um, I, I, I don't think I can add much more to what you said, and, uh, Gene said, Josh, you know, that, um, they're saying that after they build their fifty-five thousand square foot building, um, taking our views from the bunker east, um, putting in their fifty, um, geothermal wells and their parking lots and their lights and all these pertinent structures that would go along with all that, then they'll, they'll sort of leave, leave the crumbs for us, I guess, right? That's how I see it.
If I could, if I could just add to that, we're always talking about the now. And when, we, we very rarely talk about the future. There will be, personal opinion, building in the future. Because Ralph Martin already said in his symposium that they would be building or renovating the Edwards Center, the institute. And, and that's according to plans to go up another couple of stories. I'm sure to our standards, a building, but still additions to that facility and additions to where the temporary housing is. People have to understand that. They, they're going to expand.
In summary, um, I think, you know, after developing the property to the full extent that they wish, putting a conservation restriction on any land that, um, the land that is not developed, um, I don't see the value in that.
No.
My next question is to, uh, Attorney Masterman. Uh, what is the difference between our eminent domain and the Boston College Newton and, and eminent domain?
I think that Jeff Blake could probably answer that better.
Um, I, I, I'm happy to answer it, and, uh, you know, as, as lawyers and as professionals, uh, we, we have certain clients, and when we're in the middle of a litigation, we really can't talk to, uh, talk about the litigation. But I will say that, uh, having handled many, many eminent domain cases, all the eminent domain cases are different. Land is unique, communities are unique. So we can't compare one eminent domain to another eminent domain. I do know from what I've seen from the public record, um, that one of the big differences is that the Newton case, uh, the property that was taken was a developable parcel for the universe of, of people, meaning that it wasn't restricted by zoning like, uh, like East Point and was only valuable to a certain entity, a, essentially a Dover, uh, entity. So, um, th- that's, that's what I know about Newton. And, and again, uh, every eminent domain case is different. You, a land is unique, and, and you just can't compare them.
Although, um, although you shared the CPA cost per household would remain the same, aren't we using a total of two-point-five million dollars of available CPA funds? For Anthecase's one-point-five million plus interest? That could be used for some other Nahat CPA appropriate project? Despite matching funds, don't we lose access to those matching funds in order to pay the interest?
Yeah, that, that question was answered in quite a bit of detail last night, but I'll say it again. One and a half million dollars over thirty-year ban, uh, uh, for a thirty-year bond. Principal interest is about two and a half million. State match is about nine-hundred thousand or thereabouts. And so the, the Nahat taxpayer contribution is a little under one-point-seven million dollars. We went through that last night on the slides.
I think also, uh, Mr. Chairman, what the question is also trying to address is, um, because we're using whatever amount on East Point, um, does that subtract from what we could do in other projects in the town? And I guess technically, in a, in a sense, it may. Uh, we've looked at this very closely, and, um, I think the number is about seventeen percent of, um, the available funds for that category. But, uh, right, uh, you know, the, the other projects that will continue, obviously, the Town Hall, the Library, the Ellwood Chapel, um, all of those, uh, there's plenty of funding for all of those other projects into the future.
I think that was also stated explicitly last night, showing the numbers, that it averages seventeen percent over the, over the thirty years of this available CPA funds, leaving eighty-three percent available for other projects.
Right.
I think it's important to note, and Mark said it last night, there is no, no, none increase in taxes. And I seconded that. Mark said we would walk away from it if there was.
Uh, the comparable sales valuation methodology that was discussed is based on a finite data set of like property sales. So if our valuation is based on these irrefutable facts, on what basis can Northeastern claim that the land is worth more? on what basis can Northeastern claim that the land is worth more?
I guess that's a legal, I think that's a Jeff Blake question.
Actually, I I I think yeah, I think it would be Attorney Maston.
Um the 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 question is about um uh the comparable sales method. And we refer to sales in the marketplace as facts. If Jones sells to Smith for a certain amount of money, that is a fact in the marketplace. You could have ten sales of of comparable properties, all with minor differences. Each of those are facts in the marketplace. Experts then look at these facts in the marketplace and they may, they draw their own conclusions as to what those indicate, drawing from their experience, uh their analysis and a variety of other considerations. That expert then renders an opinion. Comparable sales are facts. Experts render opinions. You can't disagree about facts, but you can have a disagree about agreement about what those facts indicate resulting in opinions. And that's what we anticipate will happen at Northeastern with Northeastern.
When considering the Northeastern offer of payment of six million dollars over time, can you explain the use of per capita calculations related to the Northeastern students slash employees' impact on the Haunt infrastructure? I am unclear why we are counting them. It usually applies to resident counts and we don't count the impact of out-of-towners who work for our school, fire, police, or other businesses in town such as Jesmond Tides, et cetera, nor do we count the impact of out-of-town landscapers, construction trucks or other traveling our roads to work in the Haunt. Uh so again, the original question was, when considering the NU offer of payment of six million dollars over time, can you explain the use of per capita calculations related to the NU students and employees' impact on the Haunt infrastructure?
Josh, I get I got a comment on this if you would let me, Chairman. Uh I think there's two questions there. Uh first, the, I think the RKG report use use the per capita methodology. And I I do want to state that per capita methodology used by the RKJ report, R G K report is standard methodology. Uh if you look at any of the, I think most of the municipalities um in the Commonwealth, when they're trying to calculate pilot payments to the city for nonprofits and particularly in universities, they use the per capita methodology for that, for that um for that purpose. You know, um the question also brings up, well, you know, if they're just working here and they're not living here, um why should they be included in the per capita? Well, I mean, I suppose that, you know, I could I could also say that at least fifty percent of the people that live in the Haunt wake up in the morning, get in their car, drive to Boston, spend the day in Boston, and drive home at night, have dinner and go to bed. Probably in town a lot less than the people who are working full-time at Northeastern. Uh so maybe we shouldn't count them either. Uh I again, I think it's a tried-to methodology um that was used. And I think it's it's reflective of what the what the situation is.
I think that's a good answer, Mark, and I and um just to add to, just to add to that, um in the examples that were provided, um the Tides pays taxes, the Jesmen pays taxes. The um the 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 teachers from outside that that are employed at the Johnson School are hired by the town to provide a service for the town. They're not um, you know, um they're not, that's what they're paid for. Yeah, so you gotta use some criteria, you know, I agree with I agree with Mark. You know, pre-culture work five days a week, oftentimes I'm not around on the weekend. It's it's the, it's, you have to have some criteria on how you establish. Um and it can be real estate value, it could be per capita. Um as Mark said, I think per capita is, you know, sort of the norm, but um that's laid out in in the report, so uh
It just don't work that way. I remember as town administrator, I used to get requests from s- snowbirds, people who used to go to Florida and say, you know, can I only pay half of my trash bill? Because I'm not here half the year. Um and once you start going down that road, um you start asking, you know, I don't go to the library, so why should I pay for the library? I don't have any kids in school, so why should I have to pay for the kids at school? This is a community. You live and work in the community, you should contribute to the community. Um and that's how I see it. And I think that Northeastern, it's about time that, you know, they start considering that.
As as we go through the 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 cost per person, one of the things, uh terminologies that keeps coming up is the pilot program. People have asked, what is the pilot program or what does pilot mean? Does somebody want to take that?
A payment in lieu of taxes. It's an acronym for payment in lieu of taxes.
How does that work?
Well, I'm not, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, jumping in here.
Hi, Mark.
Uh well, I know that in other communities, there are a number of universities, for example, in Boston that um in Cambridge where, and I believe in Somerville and Medford, uh where the community has determined what they feel is a fair and equitable amount that uh nonprofit universities should pay in lieu of taxes. Uh again, they generally use the per capita methodology in determining that. Um some of the universities make those payments, some of them don't. Uh I don't think there's any law in in in, Tom Council can jump in here, I don't think there's any law that required that would require um Northeastern to pay a pilot program.
There is no law that requires it. Sorry, Mark.
No, that's okay, Jeff. I think we were all jumping to that. Um generally, pilot agreements with with universities, I mean, this gets back to the discussion of the Dover amendment and the uh uh exemptions that uh you educational institutions enjoy uh in in the Commonwealth to encourage the construction of educational facilities. And that results in large pieces of property being bought up by schools like Boston College and Northeastern and Harvard throughout municipalities, throughout the the Commonwealth. And uh obviously, as 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 indicated in the discussion we just had, you know, puts a significant burden on those towns. And so very often, there are voluntary agreements, and a pilot is essentially a voluntary agreement to kind of balance that that uh uh intrusion and uh uh lack of benefit to the to the municipalities. Municipalities bear the burdens of supporting these institutions, but don't always receive the benefits. And pilot is 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 a method, usually a negotiated method to try to, you know, kind of right that that imbalance and provide some payment to the town. But again, as stated, there there is no law that compels us. These are voluntary. Some towns have set up programs to encourage these from Dover amendment institutions, but uh which could be churches, could be uh schools, uh could be a variety of uses. And uh in some in some instances, uh municipalities are successful in negotiating pilots and others they are not so much, but they are voluntary agreements.
And I think it can be also um smaller communities too. I think um I think Phillips Andover pays a pilot payment to Andover and I believe Milton Academy pays um pilot payments to the town of Milton, so.
And Harvard pays significant or or has a significant relationship with the town of Watertown, which is uh, you know, not always understood because uh uh Harvard has more of an impact on the on the city of Cambridge.
Okay, um here's a follow-up question. Have you considered any transportation efforts by the town since there's limited parking and or babysitting? Oh, uh uh, this is, this is not a follow-up question to the RKG report. This is about town meeting. Have you considered any transportation efforts by the town since there is limited parking and or babysitting for the family with small children? Uh so for town meeting, uh we, you know, there's there's a significant amount of parking on the street at the school in the in the area. Um we will be, uh we're encouraging folks to walk or ride their walk or ride their bike down to um to the field to participate in town meeting. We will have the council on aging bus. We're working out, you know, we're trying to work that out and hopefully offer that to um seniors that might need uh help getting down to the, getting to and from the meeting. Um as far as babysitting goes, uh you know, that was a question that came up last year, you know, we especially, you know, even without the pandemic, um there's a lot of liability that comes into the town hosting some sort of childcare service that, you know, we're not in a position to to get involved in. But even on top of that, with the with the pandemic, um you know, we're not looking to um we're not, we're not really in a position to have like a group of kids being watched by the town or offer some type of service, unfortunately. Um and I apologize that's that that's the answer, but unfortunately, we can't, we don't really have much uh to offer in that in that area. Um will the property be transferred to NPT control after the taking?
No.
Why is one building at ninety percent conservation set aside, not preserving East Point as a natural resource area? I think that's the same as the first question. Um would you expect the cost to the town to be if they build with infrastructure, extra resources? Uh so I quoting the question, would you expect the cost to the town to be if they build with infrastructure, extra resources, et cetera? I'm not sure what the question is. Just reading it from last night's chat.
I can't, I can't tell.
Uh the proposed eminent domain area to be taken appears to include the entrances to the Murphy bunker and the road service immediately outside the bunker entrances. If the eminent domain takes place, does Northeastern have to get town permission for snow removal and use of road salt?
I don't think so. Um the the intent is the land on 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 top of the battery, not not interfere with Northeastern's use, existing use inside the battery.
I would agree with the chairman that the answer is no. Uh moving science will um will will remain completely unaffected.
If eminent domain is adopted and Northeastern decides to build elsewhere on the property, the town would still have infrastructure costs for the new development on the property. What would the, what would be the Nahats, what would be Nahat's recourse, A, for our costs? Roads, infrastructure, police costs, et cetera?
Well, um I'd like to hear from Gene and Mark, but my answer would be that um part of the negotiated solution would include Northeastern paying a fair share to the town of Nahat for whatever uh whatever construction is undertaken. Do you need, Mark, anything?
I would, I would agree with that. Uh part of the negotiated solution would include perhaps a a pilot study to offset um some of the costs.
I think what it's asking uh is if eminent domain passed and we were to pursue that, and then Northeastern decided to build somewhere else on their property, oh what would the town, what position would the town be in to uh redeem some of the costs associated with infrastructure that would be on the town for that other development? And I think, I think the answer, Jeff Blake, you might be able to jump in here. I think it's just a matter of negotiating that with Northeastern.
Uh sure, I'd be happy to jump in through, m- Mr. Chairman. You know, there there'll be a couple of options and it depends on which infrastructure we're talking about. Um but obviously, if we had to extend a sewer or we had to extend water or the like, there are ways that we can actually require even a Dover-protected uh entity and a tax-exempt entity to try to to at least give us some partial reimbursement. And then there's the ability to negotiate with Northeastern to try to get a pilot, a pilot agreement.
Okay.
Tony, I think Mark is is stuck. You got unmuted.
Oh, there you go.
Thank you.
Shouldn't this question, I think the eminent domain question is what they're referring to? Shouldn't this question be initially out of, out of a ballot of all thirty-two hundred citizens rather than the five hundred who can fit into the tent?
Um that's not, that's not the form of government um in the Haunt.
Yeah, eminent domain is a is an authority or 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 a a a an option that's exercised by vote of town meeting. It's it's not something that's uh uh subject by statute to a a ballot question. And ballot questions are initiated as 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 authorized by statute.
Um and the last question was, uh sorry, I still don't understand what happens if we if we do the CPA bond and then we abandon, what happens to the funds?
I I I'm happy to take that. If if you abandon the taking, then the funds would 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 sit there until it's been rescinded. But the fact is that the funds were earmarked for a specific purpose. Once that purpose is no longer there, what you would do is, and I I think you've done it in prior warrants, is you'd rescind the borrowing.
Yes, that's that's exactly correct. I mean, uh it those those funds would uh would be re- would be essentially repurposed. You'd you'd rescind the borrowing authorization or uh or otherwise use those those uh those funds for an allowable purpose um under the CPA. Um so certainly, that that would be a determination by town meeting as well. And again, it depends on at what point that the quote-unquote abandonment occurs, whether whether the bonds have actually been been issued um where the where the town is with respect to um any debt and debt service. But uh uh certainly, it's it it, there are, there are several options that could be brought back to town meeting.
What would be an allowable purpose?
Um you you would have to, uh generally, when you when you repurpose a borrowing, if you abandon the project, the funds can be repurposed for a a purpose for which a borrowing could occur for the same time period uh that if that the that the existing project, the abandoned project uh was undertaken. But uh again, it depends on on where you are with the status. It it is very common, and I think as Jeff just referenced, I think it has happened in the town, that you simply rescind the borrowing altogether. And uh so the 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 those the funds are uh the borrowing would be returned, you know, if if any money had been had been borrowed, it can be returned. Or again, it could be repurposed, depending on where you are in the in the in the process.
Uh would that be, or could that be used for paying off legal expenses, et cetera?
No, because the CPA funds would have been, would have been um uh earmarked for property acquisition and uh and not for, not for administrative or legal expenses.
Okay, I'm just asking questions that have been asked for me. So that would lead us to the three million dollars, which if we abandon eminent domain, Mark, would would we we count on payment for those expenses through the three million?
Yeah, yes.
You're talking about the donated funds? Are you talking about the donated funds?
Yes.
Yeah, the donated funds could be used, uh and you have what what Jeff was going to get at. The donated funds are completely different than the CPA funds and uh and and could be used for a for a broader purpose. CPA funds are 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 much more narrowly tailored.
Josh, haven't they been committed to do just that?
Yes.
Yes. Um and uh Jeff Jeff Blake's working up the legal wording uh for that agreement. And I believe it'll be stated explicitly that those funds And I believe it'll be stated explicitly that those funds can be used for, um, both the, the taking and also if in the unlikely event, um, we decide to, uh, abandon, um, for the costs associated with abandonment.
So is it safe to say there would be no cost to the taxpayer?
I believe that's safe to say. The abandonment cost would have to exceed the available three million dollars for, to be any risk.
Highly unlikely.
Okay, so those are all the questions that were submitted last night. Um, there are some folks in the, uh, chat that are asking questions that I've asked them if they would, uh, like to come off of mute and announce themselves and ask their questions to the board. Do you want to get to that part?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, first is, uh, Ken. Let me see where you are here on mute.
Oh, you made me.
Can you hear you?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, just didn't, and I had put these in the chat.
Name and address, please.
I'm sorry, Ken Corangelo, eighty-one Willow Road. Uh, this probably is for Dave, just to clarify on the reconsideration, uh, discussion. If reconsideration is voted on Saturday, uh, that it cannot be, cannot be brought up again on Sunday, is that correct?
Are you at the unmute, Mr. Moderator?
But there we go.
There you go.
Yes, uh, so the, the bylaw says it has to take place in the same meeting. So you don't have a real, a, a total change of, uh, the people that, uh, voted for it or against it. So it would be done, we would do it within the same meeting. And that's what I think the intent of a bylaw is.
Okay, just want to clarify, by same meeting, you mean the day, not necessarily?
Same day, yep.
Same session.
Same session.
Thank you. Uh, question with regard to eminent domain. Uh, given the constraints that Josh had described and the limitations of the wetlands by law and the limitations of the conservation easement that you're proposing, where exactly would Northeastern be allowed to build?
Um, I think they would have to look at their map and, and, uh, figure that out.
Um, that's really not an acceptable answer.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I could add, it's not the town's position, um, to answer that question. Although we have submitted under the MIPA, um, filing, um, a series of alternatives that we believe are feasible and worthy of discussion. That's a public document. Anyone can see it. And we have, um, schematic designs of where we feel some of that would be possible. Uh, we know for a fact that Northeastern has produced, um, plans that show their expansion in places other than where they're proposing now, that they have been, they've not been willing to share with the Board of Selectmen or the public. So, uh, hopefully during our negotiations, we can come to an agreement with that. You may want to ask Northeastern why they haven't shared those plans.
Well, as a matter of fact, Mark, I have asked Northeastern why they haven't shared those plans. And their answer was that those plans do not exist and are in fact a fiction of the Board of Selectmen. That's the literal answer from Northeastern.
That's not true.
Well, it would, it, let me just stepping back from that discussion, just based on the simple geometry of what is on East Point and where the lines get drawn. It, it's very difficult to see what, if you were forcing them to not build where they want to build and telling them to build elsewhere, even all of the restrictions, what possible alternative is there other than doing nothing?
We showed four alternative locations in our MIPA filing, uh, that's a public record. You can look at it. I'll put it up on the website tomorrow. Uh, so there are four alternatives there that we could at least begin our discussion around. And when I brought them up to Northeastern, they dismissed them out of hand.
Okay. Thank you. Just with regard.
I'll put them on the website tomorrow.
Thank you. Thank you. Just with regard to pilot payments, uh, understanding that there is no, uh, there's no law that forces those to be paid. Um, however, they are a matter of negotiation. Um, the school has managed to get twenty-five thousand dollars per year for the last twelve to thirteen years. Um, and Mark, in an earlier, I was going to call you Mr. Chairman, but not anymore, Selectmen Cullen. In an earlier meeting, you had mentioned that it's, no one has approached Northeastern in the last ten to twelve years regarding pilot payments. Could you confirm that that's the case?
I, I can't confirm it because I wasn't in, in the administration at the time, but, uh, I left in two thousand twelve and I'm, I'm not aware that, um, they've been asked since then.
Okay, so I would then go to Mr., uh, Administrator here. In the time which, which doesn't cover that full period, has anyone in your tenure approached Northeastern regarding pilot payments?
Just when, you know, just when we were, that, the negotiation process that I was involved in, in twenty eighteen.
Okay, so then that was part of the six million?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Just wanted to clarify that. That's it for me.
Thank you, Ken. Uh, Alice, if you could, uh, let's see. Unmute and state your name and address. Oh, there you go.
Hi, um, Alice Court, Seven Valley Road. I had a few questions about the RKG, um, analysis and what the current costs as well as the projected costs to the citizens of Nahat would be. Um, my understanding is that the RKG report had to acknowledge that it was basing its financial analysis just on the, the numbers that, um, Northeastern was giving so that the new building allegedly would add a hundred and fourteen new personnel and, and some other document, they had also listed two hundred and forty-seven personnel. I think that maybe they mentioned that in the DEIR. And so they, um, calculated that that would cost between fourteen point eight and twenty-six point seven million dollars over forty years additional to the, um, cost of running Nahat. And that would be an average in my math of, uh, four hundred twenty-two thousand five hundred to five hundred forty-two thousand five hundred per year. But, um, and I know Northeastern says it doesn't agree with those numbers, but it has not produced its own numbers for us or revealed the process by which it may have come to those conclusions. Ralph Martin just said he didn't agree. So what I understood from that though, is that given the lower number of a hundred and fourteen personnel is what Northeastern says it, um, the, uh, is currently present and that the new building would double that. Um, so is it correct to infer from the RKG analysis that the current Northeastern population is going to cost Nahat residents fourteen point eight million dollars for a cumulative cost subsidizing Northeastern's presence? And then if you add that together with what the proposed building might provide, that would seem to come to an amount of, um, twenty-nine point six to forty-one point five million dollars over forty years if the fifty-five thousand square foot building is built. And one of, there are two problems that I have with that, that, that raise even more concerns in my mind is that then if they improve the Edwards Building, which Ralph Martin said they would, um, if that accommodated more people, those numbers would go up higher. And many of us, I think you know that, um, Susan Solomon and I have from the very outset thought that a fifty-five thousand square foot building, when you calculate academic standards can usually hold far more people than, um, a hundred and fourteen and even two hundred and forty-seven, depending on what's being built inside. That really these numbers may be, um, quite, uh, under representing what the cost to Nahat taxpayers or to the functioning of the town, um, would be. Part of the problem is that, uh, after three, almost three years of this, uh, Northeastern has said that they don't have any detailed interior drawings to show us, to explain to us even what kind of rooms they're putting in there. They've just given sort of vague summaries of meeting spaces and classrooms and some lab space and some administrative space. But, uh, you know, analysis of this kind of buildings, you know, for instance, even the Johnson School, you, you know that you can fit a lot more people into a meeting space or a classroom. And then if you have turnover of those classes with people coming in and out of, in, in and out of Nahat to go to the, um, the center, that's a lot of, a lot more people. So I, I thought that this, if, if you just take the, the cumulative cost at, at the lower number, um, or i- if you add the current number to what might be occurring, it, it would cost Nahaters a seven hundred and forty thousand per year to more than a million dollars per year, uh, which wound up being four hundred and sixty-two fifty to six hundred and forty-eight average per each of six hundred households. I'm trying to imitate Josh right now because I know he does a lot of this math very easily, but, um, I tried to work it out ahead of time. So my concerns are, and, and I know people are upset of, or concerned. Some people are upset. Some people are concerned about the, the, um, the funds of the thirty-five dollars being taken, uh, from the CPA funds. But it would seem as if this goes forward, then Nahat individual households could be paying the average, could be, you know, between four hundred and sixty and six hundred and forty-eight, um, dollars, uh, in taxes. And that's not coming from CPA matched funds. That's coming from the cost of supporting hundreds of people going to these Northeastern buildings. Um, it, it, it's hard having all of these moving numbers. Um, but I think part of that had to do with the fact that Northeastern has not been very, um, revealing about what the building is actually going to be used for specifically, you know, and, and hasn't shown us the interior design and so forth. That, so I'm, I'm sort of having my, having worked out those numbers, does that make sense to people? The fact that we're already paying for a hundred and fourteen people coming and going? And that if the, an, an additional hundred and fourteen people, uh, or more, likely more in my view, come onto Nahat, those costs are, are just going to rise and rise. Sorry, that was long.
That's okay. So, um, I think there were a few different points in there, Alice, but, um, I, the first point was that, um, those RKG low estimate numbers are based on the hundred and fourteen additional, um, people that Northeastern says would be accommodated with the new, with the expansion. Um, that's correct. Um, the report does, um, outline, um, there's some different numbers. So it, it projects the numbers for the one hundred and fourteen people, which is what Northeastern has stated. Um, so we're taking that at face value or that was taken at face value and then sort of a medium number, um, which is based of a hundred and forty-seven, which is based on Northeastern's earlier, um, environmental impact statements and MIPA filings, and then a high of two hundred and five, uh, which is the maximum occupancy based on the analysis, uh, and analysis undertaken. So, um, the impact, the financial impact of the town was looked at, um, under those three scenarios. So the one four, that's a fourteen point eight million, that's for a hundred and fourteen additional population. Nineteen point one million is for the medium additional population of one forty-seven per Northeastern's earlier projections. And the twenty-six point seven is based on a higher estimate based on, um, what, what we think is a normal occupancy for an additional fifty-five thousand square feet. So I think that's the answer to part A. Um, part B is, uh, I think Northeastern's, uh, current occupancy is also about a hundred and fourteen people. So yes, uh, we're currently, um, let's call it subsidizing that. Um, let's see, part two was, it's hard to know what the real answer because, uh, Northeastern says they don't have, um, architectural plans. Um, they've been planning this project for four years. They've gone completely through the MIPA process. They've submitted the notice of intents to CONCOM. Um, their plans had them breaking ground in twenty twenty. Um, to say they don't have architectural plans to me, uh, defines logical, that defies logical thought and it, it, it kind of stretches credible imagination. But, um, that's more commentary than fact. And let's see, was, uh, I felt like there was a third point that I maybe didn't get to. Um, was there something else, Alice? The cost? The lack of plans?
Try hitting unmute now, Alice.
Okay.
All right. I know, I, I think, um, I think that, that sort of summed it up. I was trying to combine the current populations with the future pop, you know, uh, proposed populations so that we actually got a sense of, um, what the cost to the town of the entire, um, you know, the entire site would be. And then acknowledging that Ralph Martin has indicated that, um, the Edwards Building will be worked on. And this concern that I know Gene and, um, others have mentioned that, that means that it will also be expanded. But, um, so we don't know because they have not been very forthcoming about it. But thank you, um, for your answers.
Yeah, so that, you know, the answer to the first part is, yeah, those numbers are for the increased numbers, does not include the existing population or population growth elsewhere on the property, let's say.
All right, next is, um, it's coming up on my screen as eleven eleven. I'm going to ask you to unmute. Please state your name and address. Or try it again. All right. Um, next is Brendan.
Brendan, Veronica Olmstead, two Summer Street. Uh, so I got two, I think, questions. Um, have any current or prospective private donors signed any legally binding documents to fund towns' legal expenses beyond the previously mentioned three million dollar donation that's currently under nega- negotiation?
Um, I don't think that there's been anything committed beyond the three million dollars. Um, I don't know, Mark, if you know, or Jeff Blake?
We have a gift agreement that's in place right now. Tony and Jeff can speak to that.
Right, that is actually beyond the three million, um, and, uh, towards the legal cost. That, that's been ongoing.
Oh, so, so, so there are signed agreements for people to cover beyond the three million dollars that's just been given?
Uh, no, there's a, there's a gift, there's been an existing gift agreement, um, that's been in use to pay for a cost incurred thus far. Um, it doesn't have a dollar figure on it. It just says, it's just that, uh, allows donations to be made to the, the town. So, um, when that, when that fund is getting low, the, the town via Tony, uh, notifies the donors and, um, it's reimbursed essentially. Is that fair characterization, Tony?
Uh, yeah, pretty much. When we have, you know, when I get a, um, a bill for anything related, whether it be whether it be, you know, legal fees or professional services or anything related to um, you know, the Northeastern situation. I uh, paid out of that gift account and then when they're, and when I don't have enough money in the gift account. Um, I let uh, Nahat Preservation Trust know.
But, but that gift, just to be clear, Brendan, that, that gift agreement is sort of separate from this three million dollar donation.
Okay. All right. Um, my second question was, uh, given any future private donations um, are, in a sense, are speculative. Uh, if the town exhausts the, the current funds that have been gifted uh, in the litigation process and abandons it, excluding private donations, what would be the town's options to cover the abandonment costs?
Um, you wanna have a shot at that, Jeff Blake? I think, yeah.
Uh, I, I'd be happy to. Um, the, the town's options would be, well, first of all, I, I think you're setting up a, a situation that the whole purpose behind using chapter eighty eight for the eminent domain taking is so that we don't get into that position, right? We are going to get to a situation where we know how much a three judge panel is going to say that a property is worth. We are, it's very, very, very unlikely that by the time we get to that point, that, that any, anything close to the three million dollars will have been eaten up. The way the, the, the agreement is going to work is that we are going to be able to use the three million dollar donation first. And then after that, we would use any town funds. The town funds would be used, could only be used for the purchase.
Oh, oh, wait, so the, um, are you saying though that if the, if the, if the, if the, if the gift money runs out, would the town's funds be used for the legal expenses? Or is the town's funds only being used for the purchase of the land?
The CPC funds are only gonna be used for the purchase of the land.
Okay. Uh, but if the, but if there's legal fees, the town would have to fund it by some other source.
If there's legal fees beyond three million dollars?
Yes.
And you didn't get any further private donations?
Well, yeah, it, it, okay. All right. Thank you. That's all I wanted to know.
Uh, Tony, you're muted. Sorry, I'm gonna try again, uh, asking eleven eleven to unmute. Uh, it's not working. And then there was a follow-up question from Ken.
Sorry, uh, with, just following on Mr. Bernadette Olmstead's question, uh, that thread. Uh, talking about the three million dollar gift agreement itself, while the names are not going to be disclosed as they're anonymous donors, what are the terms of the gift agreement? In other words, are there any obligations, representations, anything else that the town is, is giving for this three million dollars?
Um, Jeff Blake, since you're working on the agreement, can, can you, would you be able to answer that?
My, my computer is, is cutting out. I, I didn't, I heard about probably a third of that question.
I can, I can repeat it. Can you hear me now?
I, I can now. Yep.
Okay, um, again, respecting the fact that the donors wish to remain anonymous. My question is around the terms of the agreement itself. And if there are any obligations or representations or any other uh, strings attached to lose, use the colloquial term with regard to the three million.
There will be, as all donor agreements have, there will be a set and specific um, acts or, or uses of their, of the money. The donor agreement is in the process of being drafted. It should be done very soon, the, the second donor agreement. And um, it will encompass anything to do with this particular project. This particular taking and, and or legal fees, insurance, engineering, it will be all inclusive.
Okay, will a copy of that be publicly available with the names redacted?
It will ultimately be public, it will ultimately be a public record. Yes. Yep.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
But um, to, to help Ken a little bit, Jeff, um, the, the requirements, I assume the requirements of the agreement are that the, the funds are used specifically for costs related to Articles twenty one or, or, or to eminent domain.
That's correct.
In other words, we can't use it for the Johnson School or?
That, that, that's correct. That's correct. Unless, of course, well, um, yes, that is correct. Yep.
Consistent with any, any uh, gift or grant given to municipality for a specific purpose, those funds would only be able, available for the specific purpose.
Uh, Ken, you're muted. Ken, hold on a second. Go again?
Yeah, again, thank you. I mean, all of this has been talked about for a very long time. In the end, it comes down to what is contractually binding, um, and, and that's what I'm asking about. So it sounds like these things will be in place and they will be uh, publicly available. Is that correct?
Yes, they, they will be and we will have the, the money in hand.
I, I see the item article right now. Yes, thank you.
Um, all right, so um, those are all the questions. Before people log off, I do wanna remind folks uh, that there are uh, sixty other articles uh, to be taken up at the town meeting next week. And I will be providing an, don't, don't, I see the Mr. Moderator's face there. Uh, yes, sixty, sixty so other articles on the warrant. And next Wednesday, the third and final informational session, uh, if you will have me. I will uh, be running through those articles to provide, you know, basic background information on everything else that will be in front of us for town meeting. Uh, that, that is on at seven o'clock. It'll be on Zoom. It'll be on the local TV channels. Uh, I hope that folks will tune in uh, and help, uh, help them get informed, you know, before going to town meeting. So we sort of uh, morphed from uh, the discussion of preserving East Point into Citizens Forum. But um, just to make sure, are there any other questions uh, not related to East Point um, that people would like to ask? Um, so eleven eleven, hand is raised. I'm asking to unmute.
Can he, can he submit it by um, to the chat room?
I don't know who it is. Can they, can they type in their name and address? Yeah, so eleven eleven, we're having trouble uh, getting you off of mute. So if you could uh, type your name and address in the chat and then I can ask your question for you. Um, in the meantime, there was a question uh, from Brendan. Uh, will there be citizen questions next Wednesday? Yes, I will make citizen questions next Wednesday. All right, well. Oh, here we go. I got it. Cora Long. Property tax paying residents do not get billed for police fire services. Northeastern do not pay property taxes. Do they pay for fire and police fire calls? Um, the answer to that is no. Um, so I just wanted to make one comment um, as we approach the end of the meeting. We got uh, ten or eleven days until we vote on these eminent domain articles. And um, this is really a plea, um, you know, to our citizens that um, you know, we go and we, however you feel you should vote on this, you go and vote. But let's, let's approach this vote like civil neighbors. And um, some of the tearing at each other uh, that I've seen on Facebook and in other ways is really um, really kinda incivil. Um, so uh, my hope is that we can get through these next ten days um, like, like civil neighbors and um, uh, place our votes next, next Saturday or Sunday. Um, there's a few more questions too, Mr. Chairman. Sorry.
Sure.
Um, follow-up from Cora, uh, they don't pay for the service. No, so Cora, they, as you stated, you know, the cost of the standard services provided by fire and police are um, paid for through the general fund, which is appropriated, that, that general fund is voted on at town meeting. Um, ninety percent of that is funded by uh, property taxes. Locals, you know, the rest of it's state aid and local receipts. Um, none of which, you know, Northeastern contributes to. So they do not pay for, you know, the budget that's associated with those services. If they are to, if they were to hire, um, you know, our police or fire for any detailed services, they would pay for that. Um, and uh, Michelle?
Hi, thank you. Michelle Capata, twenty nine Ocean Street. Do we have a sense of how many calls Nahat police has serviced between two thousand and eighteen and twenty twenty at the Northeastern property?
Uh, it's certainly something that can be discovered. Um, I don't know it off the top of my head. Uh, so it would be, it would just be a question to uh, the chiefs to look through their record book. Um, Brendan? You, you got a question as well?
Yes, um, the other night, there is a map shown of the eminent domain proposed taken land. Is that available on the town website? I've been trying to find it.
Uh, well, you'd have to, you actually, if you go to documents and then go to town meeting and click on the FinCon report, you could uh, you're gonna get a digital version of the Finance Committee report. You can find it there. Um.
Okay.
Is it in the warrant book, Tony? Yeah, that's what I mean. It's in the FinCom warrant book. I think it's like page two thirteen. It's in the two hundreds or some, it's, it's in there. I don't know if, if everyone's gotten that far. It's quite a long, it's quite the read. Um, but uh, it is in there. Um, we could try to separate it out. Uh, the, okay, so the, the one in the book is black and white. Uh, so we could get the color version uh, put on to the website. Sure.
Oh, all right. Thank you.
Yep. Okay, that's it. So we are through the agenda. Uh, thanks everyone for joining. Um, and I'll hand a motion to adjourn.
So, well.
I can do.
Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, roll call vote?
Jean Candy, aye.
Marco, aye.
Josh Antrim, aye. Good night, everybody.